The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
First item on our agenda is the approval of the official agenda. And I believe there may be some issues in regard to consent items.
Mr. Van Boort, certainly not issues, but for your consideration for possible items to be placed on the consent agenda, I would ask that you look carefully at the following. Roman numeral 11, Department Business Airport, all six items. All six items. Nothing this time from Building and Co. C at the bottom of the next page, Items 2 and 3.
Mr. McLauren, can we not put C1 on there? Is there any reason we can't not put it on there instead of...
You just overlooks it.
Oh, okay.
But you can put it on there. It's your pleasure.
Well, not unless unanimous consent. But all that has been our fault. The D item Courts, both Items 1 and 2. E Personnel, but with one change here, remove, if you will, that word permanent. Permanent does not have any place in employment decision. So, remove the word permanent in that item for the consent agenda with the word removed. Police Department, Items 1 and 2. Public Services Department, Items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8.
PC, I ask that you take number 1 off. My father was a bidder for that job and I'll need to recuse myself.
All right, Richard, thank you. So, Public Services G1, Almancore, is asked that it be removed from the consent agenda.
So, I believe all of them, isn't it? A big part, that's all of them.
All that I would suggest, yeah.
Are there any others that anyone else would like to recommend on consent or take off?
Do you have any public services?
I'm sorry.
What public services?
Public Services Items 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Your welcome.
If there's no further discussion, do I hear a motion that we approve the official agenda?
Sound move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the official agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It's approved. It brings us down to comments by the mayor and the board of aldermen. And the first thing that we have a notation of is a notice from TVA in which it will be an increase of .00458 of a cent, approximately half a cent, effective October the 1st, 2007, in your electric rates. We've signed an agreement way back in which they notify us at intervals in which they'll either go up or go down. And actually, they have gone down in the past. They're notifying us for a moderate increase. Any comments from the aldermen this evening?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I want to mention just briefly, when I was last here for a budget session, I know that we had talked about the line item for the refreshments. And so, I know before we get the budget to be approved, Mr. Chairman, if we can get that figure up, if it's $10, so we need that at $1,000, so we can get that up, you know, that'd be good. I think we want to talk about an additional $500, not going to break the budget. So, we can get that in there, that'd be good. Mr. Chairman.
I got, you know, I think as we continue to work through the budget over the next two weeks, we'll take a look at that as well as any other remaining items.
You know, and one last thing, as much money we are handing out, we at least can give $500 for the budget for people who are working, you know, for free for these boards and commissions, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we will ask for citizen comments. Mr. Turner, I see you there ready to make some comments.
We're here to, Mayor and Board. My name is Avon Turner from Ward 7. We just have a few. The citizens would like, soon as we can, the electric problem is crowded, you have three lines, it's hot, and sometimes people get irritable, saying that it's disgraceful that we, in that small place, with the people that we have to serve. And we thank you all for starting fixing that wall outside so that it won't be a death trap. That concern of the citizens.
Anyone else would like to take three minutes to express your thoughts? We'd be happy to hear them.
Does it matter what the topic is?
No.
I'm like a citizen.
Sure.
I'm where you are. I'm here in regard to this hearing on the matter of increasing our abhorrent taxes and realizing that one way or another, our property taxes go up every year. And I don't know about the rest of these people here, but I'm kind of tired of it. I know that we had a temporary tax on food that was supposed to be temporary, now it's permanent. That's fine. We have bond issues that come up, which, as you can tell from looking at Matt's report here, the school system gets a huge chunk of that, of that income. And, you know, the majority of people who own property obviously pay these taxes. However, you know, you have to look at their number of people in this town who don't own property, who reap all the benefits of these tax increases and these expenditures. But they don't contribute other than when they go to McDonald's and buy something to eat in the house and they pay their taxes there. So, you know, I would suggest that you find some way to look elsewhere other than at your property owners for these taxes. Because these tax increases are getting old. And I know last year, when we, everybody wants a new municipal building for the police. I do. I think that the county needs one, the sheriff's department needs more facilities. But you need to find a more creative way to use the money you've got to get these facilities. In other words, instead of constantly beautifying the main street every couple of years, it'd be good to take some of that money and put it towards something else. I mean, I don't know if I speak this for myself, but I am tired of seeing my taxes go up. And I realize you haven't had an abhorrent tax increase in some time, but...
About 22 years, I believe.
Exactly. But when we get these bond issues to come in and increase our property taxes, those are Starville City Schools, that's a startling tax, that's what it goes down to. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
We will have a section in our agenda tonight in which those of you that would like to say something about tax increase or whatever, would have that opportunity to do so. Any other citizen comments? If you've got comments about taxes in the public hearing, will be a section in there where you will have your opportunity to speak. Yes, if you want to speak something other, something other than taxes. Anyone else? Okay.
I don't think we have any public, there is some...
It's not any. This brings us down to the matter I was just talking about, and that's that we will now begin our public hearing on the matter of increasing the abhorrent taxes in the city of Starville for the fiscal year 2007, 2008. And I might start off by saying that we've not had a tax increase on the city's aspect in over 20 years. We're in a process in order to maintain roads and drainage of having to borrow money every two years. So, we only have any major increases or repairs made about every two years because, and we at a point now where I think that we are at the max where we can borrow on a short-term basis, it's not correct, or it's very little left that would be insignificant to borrow at this particular point. We have another two years of paying off the first note. So, that means that two years from now, if we do not have an abhorrent tax increase, that we will only be in our, be in a position to borrow money again for any type of improvements that might be made. So, we proposed a millage increase that would be devoted strictly to capital improvements such as roads, street repairs, and ditches, for no other reason. At this time, I will let any of the aldermen speak to the issue if they would like to at this time.
Citizens.
Yeah, or nor the citizens. You've spoken. Now, I'm going to let you speak two times so we know how you feel. Abs, is now your time to speak if you'd like to speak?
I'm sorry, I was waiting for somebody.
Oh, you were, okay.
I was waiting for a while.
But the citizens, now is your time to talk about taxes. And I will say that I am a big property owner, and I do rent to students. Mr. Fuller sitting behind you rents to students as well. And they essentially are paying taxes for the places where they live. So, it does get transferred down, not necessarily from just a 2% McDonald's or whatever. But I assure you, those of us that own property, try to pass it on to the person that's renting the properties. So, some people who do not pay anything but rent in this city are paying, helping to pay taxes. I see Ms. Dale there, she's got lots of problems. Anybody would like to get up and speak in regard to this? If I were to turn the tables, I would ask, I would ask at one time as a taxpayer, what am I getting for my, for the increase? One of the biggest problems that we have in the city, you go in to say overlay a road, you go back two years later, it's alligatored where collapsed sewer lines and other issues have been like that. I'm talking about that within six months, when we did one by the Baptist church over here, in front of building you own, Richard, I believe you own that building across the street right there, it's all alligatored right there, six months after it was repaired, had not shown up previously. Obviously, on a brand-new road that's been overlaid, that we got some degree of collapsed sewer line or water line or something as such like that. The infrastructure part of the city of Starville is in desperate need of repairs. Yes, ma'am?
Are there any ways other than millage on property taxes to collect funds specifically for road improvement, like through car tags or other means? I know sometimes you have toll roads, I'm not suggesting toll booth in Starville, but it just seems like we have a lot more people that do drive into the city and use the roads and wear them out than actually live in the city.
Unfortunately, the city gets its revenue through abhorrent, it gets it through sales tax, the money spent in the city, we get a percentage of the sales tax. We get a percentage of monies from fines, traffic fines, DUIs, other issues like that. We get a percentage of our monies from the 2% sales tax, that's strictly economically developed, and that's pretty well dictated on where that money's going to go. And most of the monies we get are, a line share comes from abhorrent taxes. We've been fortunate in our community over the last 20 years that we've grown from a population, I remember our city when it was a population of about 7,000 people, that we're up over 23,000 people now, close to it. And we've grown through increasing sales tax revenue, we've grown through fines and other issues like that, we've gone through property being reappraised and reevaluated. And frankly, the schools have maintained the highest level of abhorrent tax percentage of what they can collect. And it seems like that if you look at your tax bill, the largest amount goes to the city schools. The city gets the second amount. County gets, they get a larger account than we do?
Yes, they do, significantly.
The county, and I find it interesting, the county had a tax increase last year, they're going to have another one this year, did you go and protest?
I will.
I suggest to all of you, nobody ever protest what the counties doing. Just the city.
It'd be nice to see a public notice.
But they, they pretty well increase their taxes if will, and they don't, they don't, they hardly have, from what I understand, I've not been there, but one time, and I was told I could move my property somewhere else when I raised the issue.
There was a notice in today's Starville...
That they're having a tax increase, I believe, for the county schools as well as the...
The general...
General, fighting. And so, you've got your opportunity to say protest of that particular issue. Very few people ever protest raising the county taxes. And am I not right, the 22 years, it's been 22 years since we've had a tax increase?
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
We've been fortunate with new growth and properties put on the books and so forth, but...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. ...
I want to come in.
You can.
Madam City Clerk, back during the administration of 1997 to 2001, there was a one-mill increase at that time, am I correct or not? And that one-mill increase was allegedly, or at the time it passed via mark for annex roads, that, is that correct? And that one-mill that was passed under the pretense of being used for annex roads is no longer here marked for annex roads, am I right? And that one-mill has now been converted religiously, or just been converted rather, into the general fund for just general fund use, for, in general fund, we use base for anything, right? So, in other words, the tax has been increased by at least one-mill, not 20-some years ago, but it's increased during the 1997 to 2001 administration. Am I right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And how much did that one-mill bring in at the time? Would it be that much in 1991?
It was a whole one, please.
An 01. That's not a whole lot of money, say, when you're, when you're looking at, Mr. Davis has informed me today, he had taken his money and distributed around in Green Oaks, and he, they were planning to mill one street up or two streets, and when they got down to it, it didn't have any subbase. So, it immediately increased for repair by 60,000, is that right, or 53,000?
It wasn't that much, but it significantly...
It was a significant amount, so all he got to do was just through two roads. And he's saying, we're facing a situation where when you mill the streets down, you get down to the subbase in Starville, Mississippi, something just happens, all that gravel and clay gravel and everything just disappears. And they have to go in and, what they refer to as cement, sawl cement, in order to build a base in regard to some of that. Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. It might understand that this one-mill was designated for roads at that time.
That's correct.
And therefore, all of a sudden, it's not that way anymore.
That's my understanding. That's why, it's the City Clerk, and she's corroborated that, and she said it's no longer there. No, ma'am, it's not.
Well, what happened? Why was it changed? Was the public notified it was going to be changed, and the battle for the roads, it should continue? And at that time, yes, it may be loved, but we have more houses now, we have more apartments now. So, that should have been increased drastically.
City, cost of city services also increased, just the...
Well, yeah, I understand that. But what concerns me is, if we say this is going to go for roads and streets and ditches, what's going to happen down the road is, we're going to take that two or three mill and put it in general fund, like with the one-mill?
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond briefly...
I don't think we can speak of what future, future alderman will do.
I think this kind of concerns me, if we're called one, then we don't have, but this is what we're switching, we're moving. I mean, we're getting switched though, beginning...
Did you have something you want to say, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir, just very briefly. Ms. Cole, I mean, that's the point here. I mean, you know, the board can change that anytime there's a majority vote. I mean, you know, just like happened to that one-mill. And the, at the, at the time that passed, it was, it was to understand that it will be used for the roads, because we had just basically annexed in 19, the latter part of 1998. So, that money can be used for anything, salaries or whatever they want to use it for. And if the tax increase changed, it can be a mark, but then come January, February, or even next month after the tax increase passes, it can be used for anything that, that a majority of this board desires. So, it's nothing set in stone or concrete that it has to be used for that purpose, like you just said, any, the board can do whatever they want to do with it.
Okay, so in other words, if it was approved, it went through, you say it's for streets, it ain't marked?
Well, well, it could be, but then you take $100,000 a year since 19, 2001, it's six years, that's $600,000. And how much did we just spend, Mr. Cox, this year on roads?
1.4 million for...
1.4 million, so just every two years, if we're spending 1.4 million, that $100,000, $600,000 is just a drop in the bucket of what's actually needed for the roads. And I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just putting out some...
Well, and I, I mean, I'm noticing roads that got paved that really didn't need it and that love the roads. Now, I realize the aldermen had their choice of what roads they wanted paved, or what was fixed, and that were in worse condition than the ones that got, some of the ones that got...
Do you have something you want to say, sir?
Yes, I do. We, 1.4 million for infrastructure repair this year.
Yes, sir.
So, this sounds to me like we're going to add tax for three mills maybe, take that money and say, okay, we're going to use it for road repair, then take the 1.4 that's probably been carried over again for road repair and use it for something else. So, we're just, we're just doing a little bait and switch here. I say, okay, in fact, it's, I'll use an analogy, they can use lotteries to pay education costs. Sure, they take an X million dollars from lottery to pay education, then go back and reduce the state appropriations for lotteries the same amount. I think we're going to do the same thing. I think that if we recover, if we, even if we weren't, we take three mills, plot four streets, then where's the one-mill, 1.4 million that you worked up? But is that going to get converted into some other things?
To be, to be fair, the 1.4 that the mayor was referring to was the money that was spent in this fiscal year...
Right.
For both street and drainage improvements or maintenance. That is not the amount that we have budgeted in the...
Okay, well, how much do you have there?
350,000.
Okay, well, still, that means that 350,000, then it will get shifted to something else under the guise of saying that we're going to pay for streets and roads under this millage increase. I don't think that's right.
I don't think that's the case. That's not the intent of the current alderman.
I don't think anybody in this room could reach an intent of, looking at folks sitting at that table.
Certainly, that becomes a matter of opinion, doesn't it?
It is, and that's it. And this is what they call...
Right. Anyone else would like to have a say? Any of the aldermen at this time?
Well, I'd like to move back to what we talked about earlier today. And I'm very much concerned that nobody can give me an answer to what we can be guaranteed a tax increase will produce. And I would be absolutely 100% against a tax increase unless we can find a legal way of documentations that we can hold this tax to roads, streets, drainage, and water. And I have not spoke to anybody today that can guarantee me that this money cannot be spent in any way that the board sees fit. And I'm happy that aldermen expressed that it's a will of the board of what to do with the money. And I'm totally against the way we can get a legal guarantee that this money can be used for only roads, and ditches, and drainage, and water. Because I've seen too much money in the past here in Starville, Mississippi, go into general fund, and nobody to this day can tell you what happened to it. And it's been a lot of questions, where did the money go that y'all got from so-and-so? Nobody knows.
Somebody can...
And then we borrow money to fix the streets, and we can all and borrow enough to fix a small portion of the repairs that needs to be done just to the streets. And when you do that, you're creating a problem within the communities, because you never can satisfy everybody in that community with a small amount of money to fix a street. You can only patch and fix a small area that needs repair. And unless we can get a, some legal document that says this money can be spent, I am totally opposed to a tax increase.
Anyone else on the board like to express their thoughts in regard to an abhorrent tax increase? If not, we'll move this hearing. Anyone else in the audience? We'll move the hearing closed. We'll move straight to the board business, and that's the presentation of the budget for the city of Starville. And we'll have our, our chairman of the budget committee to make the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, let me just briefly say one thing about the roads, if I could, just very briefly. Mr. Mayor, we had a good system that was in place on my first two terms on the board, '93, '97, '97, '01. Mr. Wel was, was instructed by the board to come up with a priority one and two streets. And what we did was, Mr. Wel would make a recommendation to the board as to what streets needs to be resurfaced regardless of whether it's in wars, one, two, three, four, five, or six at the time. And so, therefore, you know, it, it'd probably be a better use of our money if we were, if we just revert back to that approach as opposed to the current system of seven wards being divided the money equally. Because back during those first two terms, we had enough dollars appropriated in our budgets to do the street overlay. I mean, we had no problem, the money was there. And so, after the first two administrations, the priority started changing to other things. So, we always had the money. So, maybe for the upcoming year, we just need to go back to the old system that is not broken, that Mr. Wel was instructed to do, is just designate and recommend to the board what streets is best. And so, Mr. Wel saw most of the streets in War II, War III, it was no issue with the board, we just went ahead and approved it, because he's the city engineer, and so he is assigned with that duty. So, I think that the best thing for us to start looking at is just the last, last four or five years, we start getting in trouble with this money not being available for streets. So, we need to go back to the old system of handling the money. That's what I would like to do for the purpose of the streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
If you want to make a comment to that, one of the things we talked about, Roy, this morning at our budget work session, was that if we had this tax increase, it would strictly be used on the recommendation of the engineer, not necessarily in particular one ward or the other. And so, it would be kind of consideration going back to what you were talking about, of letting the engineer come forward with the proposals of the streets that needed to be built. the most.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we'll present tonight is part one of a budget presentation. The second part would be at our next board meeting, September eighteenth, where, where we would, uh, propose to approve our budget. Primarily, we'll talk today about the revenue side of the budget because that's mostly fixed now. Um, and we are still working as a board to establish priorities around expenses, and , uh, those numbers can change to some degree. The first slide here talks about, um, the amount of money we have in our general fund. And we do have other funds within the city. We call those enterprise funds. So for example, sanitation, where we pay our ten dollar and fifty cent, um, a month fee, that's in a separate fund that is managed, um, similar to water and our electric department. So general fund are the things that we think of when you think of city providing services, police, fire, streets. And this year, we have a, a budget revenue of fourteen point nine million dollars. And that represents about a point eight percent increase over last year's revenue. The, you will notice though in two thousand and seven, that, that light at the colored bar, and that represents the nine hundred thousand dollars that we borrowed, uh, to complete that street and drainage program over the last year. But in general terms, um, you can see since two thousand, the revenue increases that, uh, that we've seen within the city. This talks a little bit about sales tax. And sales tax is first because sales tax is king within the city from a revenue standpoint. Thirty-four percent of our bu- our budgeted revenue comes from sales tax. You of course pay seven percent on all of your, uh, consumed items, uh, within the city, and that all goes to the sa- the state, but then they return eighteen point five percent of that seven percent, if you still follow me. Um, and that's how we end up with, uh, having five, a little over five million dollars in sales taxes estimated this year. Um, and that again is, is the lion's share of our, uh, overall revenue stream. This year, we, as part of our budget, have an estimate of a three percent increase. And I'm going to tell you upfront that, um, the first year and when we put together the FYO six budget, um, we put in a three percent increase, and then we actually experienced eight percent. It's great surprise. So last year, um, I put in a five percent increase, and I completely missed it again, this time missed it the wrong way, we had about a three percent increase in sales tax. So I don't have a crystal ball here, and, and I expect I'll be wrong again, but that's what we're using, um, as our estimate for, uh, sales tax growth. On property tax, uh, that's going to represent about nineteen percent of your overall general fund budget. This is perhaps the greatest way to tell how a city is growing. In, in total, the, uh, property tax this year compared to last year will be up about four percent. Um, but even that figure's a bit misleading because the property taxes, Pat Kite estimates within the city will increase by five percent. That is not an ad valorem increase, that's simply, as you look around, you see more restaurants, more buildings, more houses, that's true organic growth. And that's really the best way you can, uh, look at our city and say, how much are we growing? About five percent a year is, um, perhaps the best, uh, the best number. And the reason why that three point, it, it's actually four percent instead of the five percent is because car tax, um, that we're not adding cars to the community, it's really more in buildings. Um, so overall property tax is going to be about two point seven five million of that overall fourteen point nine. When we talk about property tax, when you pay your bill at the county in January, um, you'll notice that, uh, you actually had three different, uh, components to that overall tax bill. And by far, as the mayor mentioned, the lion's share goes to our city schools here, in fact, just over fifty percent. Um, in the county, um, they have, uh, made a decision to increase millage this year, so their millage, uh, will go up to thirty-nine point five eight this year, which is about thirty-five percent. And then the city share of when you go and pay your taxes, um, is about fourteen percent. Um, and we have, as was mentioned before, a millage base of sixteen point one five, um, which, to be fair, um, is one of the lowest, um, in the, uh, in the state from, from the municipality of, of our size. We do more with, uh, uh, with less than I think you can argue than any other community. Um, and that's a reflection of how hard the departments work and efficiency. Um, and we have run, uh, very bare budgets, um, in the past, and, and certainly this budget presentation, uh, will, will reflect that once again. Uh, but when you do go to that, uh, when you pay your taxes, do keep in mind that there's three different streams. Yes, it's all one community, but the city itself, um, gets about fourteen percent when you go and pay your taxes. Um, so back to, uh, back to revenue, um, I, I mentioned the city is growing, and you see here in two thousand and six, these are the, the things that we generally think of as revenue, um, property taxes, sales tax, um, permits, fines, et cetera. And if you go back to two years ago, we had about, um, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more last year than we did in two thousand and six. And in fact, in two thousand and eight, we saw a tremendous jump, uh, in, uh, the overall revenue, uh, that would come in, and these are again the traditional sources, sales tax, property taxes. Um, and we'll talk about why that is. Um, well, you have that organic growth in the ad valorem tax, you did have the reappraisals, um, our tax equivalent payments, we get tax equivalent from TVA, from Northland Cable and from others. But we saw some tremendous increases in building permits. Uh, we had budgeted roughly a hundred and twenty thousand in revenue, but because of all the, the building around town, especially the commercial, uh, we're expecting about two hundred and seventy-five thousand in, in building permits this year. Funds have increased, um, as the community gets larger and you have more people come in, um, we've seen a, a significant increase there. And even in investment interest, um, this is what, uh, the mayor refers to as the sweep account. Um, we have seen significant increases in how we invest the money within the city, um, and we're currently earning, um, over five percent now, I think.
Five point six, I believe.
And wow. Um, and so that, these, the revenue that we mentioned there, the reason why revenue is up significantly is, um, uh, is because of that. And we've of course continued to see sales tax grow. This though talks about, because I did tell you from the very beginning that our overall budget was only going to go up about point eight percent, um, there is a reason why, um, uh, it's still relatively flat. While revenue is, um, is up, the rollover or what's left not spent from this year that goes into next year is smaller, um, than we had experienced last year. So that's why the overall budgets are flat, even though you, we do continue to see record, uh, sales tax and, and ad valorem taxes. And, and the reasons for that are, are pretty clear as well. We are spending more on infrastructure than we have in previous budgets, um, and those are, uh, not only the big streets and drainage program that we talked about, but also, um, we're seeing a crumbling infrastructure and, and the, the crews are out on a daily basis addressing that. We also have had, uh, flat, relatively flat budgets year in and year out. And so as natural things increase, like gasoline and benefits and, and, um, insurance, even though budgets are staying relatively flat, um, the total percentage that is spent out of that budget has, has increased, um, uh, because we haven't been increasing those budgets. And then we also were able to provide a, a small, uh, mid-year raise. Um, and then as I've mentioned before, sales taxes came in a little bit lower than what I had originally forecast, um, which is another reason why, in general, that rollover is, is going to be down. So, um, this is just a reminder then of, of where we are for a general fund, about a fourteen point nine million dollar budget. And we'll talk a little bit about expenses, but not as in great detail. This is in general where your general fund, um, uh, tax dollars go. About fifty percent of that fourteen point nine million are going to go to police and fire. Um, and that's what you would expect, public safety should be the, the lion's share of where we spend our money. Um, and then you see the, the smaller, uh, areas there, um, street department or the, the general repairs that you see landscaping, um, of course, park and rec is funded in two ways. Uh, there's both, um, about nine hundred thousand dollars that has contributed out of the general fund, and then for their improvements, the new facilities, that comes out of the two percent tax. Um, but big picture, that's where the, the money's going. And then as part of this proposal, and, and I will tell you that it's just a proposal, we are still working as a, a mayor and board to identify what are our priorities and, and to make sure that we're funding those appropriately. But to come up with a balanced budget, uh, we had to do several things. Um, one, we had to put in a, a freeze on the operational budgets, um, of all the departments. Uh, this means what they received last year, um, regardless of the increase in expenses that we see, as the rest of us see, um, that, uh, we would freeze them at that level. Um, secondly, we'd need to delay some machinery and equipment purchases, and we have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of, um, uh, recommended purchases that this budget does not include. And those things can be software, um, to have more efficient operations in, in the clerk and court system. Um, it can be trucks. We have some, uh, very aging equipment in, in some of the areas, um, and this does ask them to delay. And then our outside contributions are also, um, uh, frozen, if you will, although, um, there will probably be some adjustments within that overall tally. Um, it does though reflect, uh, the top priority in this budget, and, and that's, uh, our employees. We have, uh, put as our priority to make some equity adjustments. This is just a proposal, there are others, and we will continue to, to work together to, to come up with what's the right answer. Um, but you can see we've, we've, uh, this is, I believe, some of the largest raises that we've been able to fund out of general fund, um, in, in memory. No one has been able to, to say in general fund that there's ever been anything larger than this. And yet the reality is, is we've done our salary equity surveys, um, we're still behind, um, and we are losing people to other communities, other municipalities, who are able to offer more competitive, uh, salary packages. Um, but this does put as a priority salaries. We've established a new minimum salary within the city of seventeen thousand five hundred. Uh, we currently have some employees, um, making, uh, in the low fifteen thousands, uh, in the low fifteen thousand, um, in several different departments, uh, and while they're entry-level positions, um, uh, we felt that, uh, we needed to make some adjustments. And then there's some things that are simply beyond our control. The state told us we had to add to the retirement fund a five percent increase. Um, we've seen similar increases in years past on health insurance and other things. Sometimes we don't have a lot of choice on how we spend our money. This budget does include, um, almost nine hundred thousand dollars for street and drainage, um, but the problem is, is five hundred and fifty thousand of that goes to debt service. It goes to pay, um, uh, notes that we've already borrowed and, and we're already in the process, as you see roads being paved today and, and drainage, um, improvements. Um, that's paying for old stuff out of, uh, out of this budget. So to, to balance the current budget, we have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in maintenance, um, and according to our engineer, that's about half of what he estimates we would need for maintenance on a yearly basis. Um, and so that is a, a concern for all of us on, on the board. And then, uh, finally, the ending reserve is maintained at that five hundred thousand dollar level. I just want to touch on restaurant tax because it was, it was mentioned before. Um, since the inception, uh, we have more than doubled, um, in the, uh, the tax collections there on two percent tax. And now it comes in at just over one point two million dollars. That is the two percent that you pay when you go out to restaurants in addition to the seven percent sales tax. Um, obviously some tremendous growth, and, and you can point to this as, um, the, not only the organic growth that we see, new residents in town, but really in the visitors, um, and whether it be football games or soccer tournaments. We've really focused on trying to increase these, uh, tournaments that we have here so that, um, we can affect, uh, more revenue. And then this is how that money's distributed, that one point two million will go through, um, primarily to park and rec, and those for, uh, the big capital items, the, primarily the indoor sports flex is where they'll be focusing that money. Um, twenty percent goes to the university for their, uh, activities, um, fifteen percent to both OCDA and to the visitor and convention bureau, and then ten percent comes to the city for economic development. So that's the, the last slide. There are more printed copies up on the front chair if anybody would like them. Um, the, this budget is, is now on the website, um, uh, and it's about a hundred and forty pages. Um, but, uh, but as of right now, revenue looks, um, to be as accurate a forecast as we can get, at fourteen point nine, and we'll continue to work on the expense side, um, to, uh, to present something for approval at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. This brings us down on the agenda for consideration of an increase in the ad valorem tax rate and setting the ad valorem tax levy for the city of Starkville two thousand seven, two thousand and eight. Roads now open for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one point, of course, the setting of the ad valorem tax rate, uh, will be done at the time of adoption of the budget, not considered tonight.
Thank you for my...
Oh, by law.
At the next board meeting is the current proposal to adopt the FYO eight fiscal budget, which would be September eighteenth.
Well, it falls on fifteen, falls on that weekend, so they'll allow you to move it over to the eighth inch of it. Do we have any, uh, do we have a motion that we increase ad valorem tax? No what?
No increase.
Really, that ain't what you were saying this morning?
No.
Twice this one. Twice this one, that's right.
As, as we understand it, Marquita, if you'll correct us, in ad val- if there were to be an ad valorem increase, it would need to happen tonight?
Yes, the only reason is because Pat, uh, Pat Kite knows her figures by his set. It actually happened to him here too.
What? So the answer is no?
No. It's not. It didn't matter what Pat Kite...
Didn't matter what I...
Well, she knew she ain't right, looking here, don't you?
I just said that if the board is going to consider the increase in the ad valorem tax at the budget, at the approval of the budget on the next board meeting, they need to, they have to announce it tonight.
That we're going to have to announce that we're going to consider it again?
If you're, if you're not going to adopt it tonight.
We're going to adopt it tonight, this table action to consider it. This board action to consider it.
It's up to a motion to be about it, you know, that...
Consider it, right?
Yeah. The, the motion for the setting of the ad valorem tax.
There's some interest around this table, Mr. Mayor, for a tax increase, and let's be, be open with the, with the public and the taxpayers, is there any interest at this table?
Was it, was it earlier today?
I wasn't here earlier this morning.
I know you weren't, but it was, everybody else was interested.
I still am. No, it wasn't six, uh, Alderman Perkins, but I was one in favor of it, and I still am. But I know... But, I know I didn't make a motion, because I know that there's not enough votes around this table for it to pass. But, yes, I will say publicly that I am in favor of an increase of ad valorem tax. Because I know we don't have the revenue coming in that would do the things that we need to do, considering the fact that we have to pay back what we borrowed, what we're doing now.
Thank Ms. Self for speaking up. We will move on.
If there's a, if there's a tax increase, and it will have to be known to me tonight, so that I can get the exact figures from real, and make it clear we are about to know that.
Did you not hear the Alderman? They were all silent, except for Ms. Self.
Yeah. And I don't think we need to leave this open. I think we need to settle the issue, not only for the legal requirements, but, you know, this has been talked about and bantered around, and it needs to be settled.
So, obviously, it's not gonna get settled, because we can't get enough people here that would have a motion that would go and carry it to the next level, or whatever. So, as far as the chair is concerned, it's a dead issue at this point. We'll move on with our business, departmental business. The airport is all consent. It brings us down, Ben, the building codes, planning department.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your healthcare needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in healthcare.
I'm gonna defer. I'm sure y'all all know Jeff Lyles, he's our code inspector, and he's been working on these items, and has compiled reports. A couple of them, if y'all looked over the summary sheet that was attached, some of these have been ongoing for an extended period of time, and Mr. Lyles, since he's come on board, has tried to close out some of those that are older and move on. This is the first batch that has come before the board, and like we talked about before, every, y'all's first monthly meeting will be when these code items come before the board for review. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lyles, since he's gone out. Since he's compiled these reports and summary sheets for y'all, he went out this morning to review the situation, take some pictures, and give y'all an up-to-minute update on where, what the situation is, in case there's been anything that's occurred since these summary sheets were put together. So, I'll turn it over to him.
All right. First item we have is Sam Harris's property, which is gonna be located at the Old West Point Road and Mark Luther King intersection. Went by this morning.
Okay, hold on, Mr.
I need to ask if Mr. Sammy Harris is here, present tonight? Or anyone who might have an interest in that? So, we're proceeding with this hearing without anyone present.
Tammy, let the minutes reflect, if no one answered.
All right. Mr. Mayor, in reference to Mr. Harris, I did talk with Ms. Harris this morning. We came to the recommendation of what was gonna be presented tonight. This case dates back to, back in February of '07, before I came on. I think this has been a property that's been ongoing for the last several years of trying to get cleaned up. We have actually got it cleaned up, as of today. I've talked with Mr. Harris, and they've come to all conclusions that I recommended to him. The property, what I would like to see recommended, though, is what I told Ms. Harris, is we need to get this established as a repeat offender. That way, we don't have to go through this process again if the property becomes back in the shape of which it was to begin with. Because we're looking at probably almost two years to get this property dated back to where it's at now, and that's in good standards. So.
It's a good standard as of today, so we can take that off our list and move on to the second one.
But, just under the recommendation to the attorney is to have it designated as a repeat violator, upon the city attorney's recommendation for the set order.
This is in my ward. It is a nuisance. It has been a past concern, and while I appreciate their efforts to clean up today, this has been years of effort, so I'm very serious about us making the appropriate designation so that we don't have to spend the next three years getting it back to an appropriate state. How do we go about doing that, Rodney?
You just need to make a resolution or an order that this be declared a habitual offender, and therefore, kicks in another part of our ordinance that allows us to take quicker steps to get this taken care of if it happens again.
We have a motion.
Mayor and Board, I would move that the property at 202 Old West Point Road, owned by Sammy Harris, currently owned by Sammy Harris, be determined a habitual nuisance, and that the board designate this property as a repeat violator.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Sir.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Go to your second item, please.
Second item is gonna be the GT Lindsay property on McKee Street.
The Lindsay's here, or GT Harris?
GT Lindsay.
GT Lindsay. Is anyone here, represent them?
I'm currently living next to this place. I moved here in May, early June of the state. I see kids clearly from five, 12 years old, living around the house. I see rats running around outside, you know, for long, longer. I know y'all are working hard at it, but I just need to get time to take care of the kids going in and out of the house, and just take care of the state.
Sir, for the purposes of the minutes, could you state your name and your residence address?
Jason Worthy, 607 McKee.
You got that, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
All right. My recommendation would be on Mr. Lindsay. Like I said, this is a property that's been ongoing since before I arrived. The property, as of today, is still in the same shape it was when I first got here, if not worse. Recommendations on Mr. Lindsay's property would be, give him a five-day notice to come in compliance, if not, board recommendations of either sending out bids to have this property cleaned at our expense, and then, recover our funds at a later date through the court And also, have this property put as a repeat offender also.
So, you're saying a five-day notice to rectify a situation?
Just my recommendation would be given. He's had plenty of notices, and he still won't come. I'm saying a minimum, but five days at the most. I don't believe he's not in the past. I don't see him doing it still. But, maybe give him five more days from Saturday's date, or come in compliance. If he doesn't, it's see fit to put a bid out, get the property cleaned. I think we have that through our fundings to do such, and then, go back through our legal proceedings to get our funds back.
So, five days notice for the property owner to clean it, and then, if nothing happens within that, for us to take the appropriate legal actions to.
To have it cleaned ourselves, and then, recover our funds. Yes, sir.
And also designate as a repeat violator?
Yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
Also, the resolution needs to state that the board adjudicates this parcel of land in its condition to be a minister of the public health and safety of the community.
So, I move that we adjudicate that this parcel of land, 609 McKee Street, be designated as a minister of public health, safety, and welfare. We give five days' notice to the property owner to rectify the situation, if that is not accomplished, followed through with the appropriate legal action to clean the property, and also designate this particular parcel as a repeat violator.
Can you authorize the use of city personnel?
Right.
For the condition?
Appropriately, to rectify the situation. Just a point of clarification, before I second. Are we designating the property owner or the property as a repeat violator?
It's the property owner for this particular property, because it may be that this property owner has several properties around the city. That's why we referenced the parcel number as well as the address.
Second.
That motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The next item is Kirk Christie. Is he here? Mike, anyone representing him? Is this one of pieces that's been taken care of, or not?
No, sir. As of this morning, the property is still in the same state as it was when I first started this. This is another case that I picked up. The last thing I've talked to Ben about was about two weeks ago, he had came under some recommendations to Mr. Christie about getting a permit, a building permit or demolition permit. And since the two weeks he's talked to him, he hasn't come in. Recommendations would go forth that if Mr. Christie, I would say, give him, recommend maybe five days to come in and get his permits, to either demolition permit or new building permit, to come, to bring the house, the structure into compliance, where to be habitable for human habitation. And also, if that doesn't happen, we see fit through our fundings to have the city demolish the house, or bring it into standards, and recover our funds through the legal process also.
Yes, it's located.
Highway 12, right across from the old Coke Planet.
It's been, it's been underway for four, five years.
Has it? Like I said, this is another file that I've received, or I've tried to cover complete since I've received it.
Yeah, the Al come burnt. Attorney, if I were you, you need a similar education on it.
I do. And there's no one here on behalf of Mr. Christie, or anyone that has an interest in that property? Let the minutes reflect it. No one answered.
One house from like, he used to say, please do something.
Ms. Henderson, we all know who you are, but if you would, for the minutes, just state your name.
I'm money to Henderson, and my mother lives next door, 318. And the rats are like, yeah, they're all, and then, not only then come and get a permit, but something has to be done after you get the permit, and you can't just permit it sit on, sit on the desk somewhere and not do anything.
Do we have a similar motion on this particular item?
What is the motion again? Do you make a motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion, a move that we adjudicate that the property in question, 316 Highway 12 West, is adjudicated as a missing property in violation of health, safety, and welfare. Also, that we ask the property owner to obtain the appropriate permits to rectify the situation, whether that be building and/or demolition within five days, if building apartment. And also, that work begin on that property in question within an appropriate time as set by code enforcement staff and building staff, once the appropriate permits are acquired. And if this doesn't happen, we take the appropriate legal action to rectify situations. Did you understand?
Well, two things. A building permit is good for six months.
Okay.
A demolition permit is good for 30 days.
Okay.
So, like Ms. Henderson was talking about, if they got a building permit tomorrow and didn't do anything for five months and 29 days, you know, that was part of what she said, as far as some type of immediate action. So, the building permit's good for six months, the demolition permit for 30 days.
Sure.
So, probably better if the board made a recommendation for a timeframe, which I would say, obtain a building permit in five days and begin some type of activity within 30. That way, you're covered, whether it's a demolition permit, which would only be a day or two, a couple of days.
If you want board action on that.
I think 30 days, if you're reasonable. At least begin some activity, whatever type of permit is obtained.
That's why I left it up to y'all to decide what was appropriate. But, if you want that stated formally in the motion, we can do that as well. Sammy, do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Did that cover all the points, Mr. Favor?
It did.
Do we have a second? Second. Have a motion, second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Willie Wilson, has that one been resolved, or is that?
No, sir, it has not.
Is anyone here tonight representing Mr. Willie Wilson, or heirs as of, of Willie Wilson? Go ahead, Ms. Lyles.
All right, sir. This would be another property that has, that has been ongoing for several years, I believe. This was an old two-story structure that had, was, had become to the point, I think it was used for training exercises through our fire department. I've talked with the legal person that is representing Mr. Wilson, and we came to the conclusion that he thought that the city was responsible for the property after the training exercises. I asked him that, through our files, we had no contract that stated such, that unless he could produce it, it was gonna be his responsibility to bring the building in compliance. My recommendations here is complete demolition of the property and cleanup, if said. Be probably on the same recommendation of Mr. Christie's. I'd give him a 30-day demolition permit. He asked five days to come in and see such, and see some activity within the 30. After the 30-day period, I would recommend the city go through the process of legal of us having it cleaned up and recover our funds through legal process. And also, put this as a repeat offender, because of the long process we've had to go through to get this to where it's at today.
Do we have a motion?
Alderman Davis is good at that.
Yeah, you're on a roll, Mr. Davis. I got some seconds, amen to you down here.
It's the same as the last one.
Same motion as the last one?
So moved with the appropriate designations of the property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The next one with Flora Brown. Thought y'all had some of these things we done.
We thought we had a few of them. We thought so.
I haven't found one yet. Is Ms. Flora Brown available this evening, or any representative of that family? Go ahead, Ms. Lyles.
All right. On Ms. Floris, we've tried to come through a process of getting this property. She's willing to turn it over to somebody. We thought we had a Habitat of Humanity that was gonna take it over, but they seem to think the property's too small to do what they need to do. And we just found this out today, so I recommend same actions as Mrs. Brown. Give her a five-day notice to come in and get a demolition permit, if such see fit, that within the 30 days nothing is done, the city was to go through their legal actions to have the building demolished and the lot cleaned up, and us recover our funds through the legal process.
And just how small is the lot, I'm curious?
I believe it's 50 by 60.
Yeah, very small.
Is it too small?
It's, it doesn't meet any of the requirements, and talking to, Mr. Raspberry's last name?
Raspberry, Mr. Raspberry.
Freddie Raspberry had said they had looked into it, and they had talked, they had had some negotiations and discussions with.
Is it possible to build any type of house on it?
Mr. Raspberry feels like they probably could, but as far as the Habitat Board had looked at it, and they felt like that they would have to, they would have to obtain too many variances in order for them to build the type of home that, I think they have a standard home that they build for families, and they felt like that they would have to ask too much of the city in the way of variances for this particular property. So, they, their board decided that they would pass on this particular property, but we do keep them advised of any that do come up, and they've expressed an interest in maybe trying to work something out in the future with others.
Is, without any type of zoning or exceptions, could a house be built on it?
Without any variances, more than likely not. It'd be a very small house.
What is the zoning designated area?
It is.
R5?
I believe it's, I believe it is, oh, we didn't put it on there. I believe it's R4.
That's close.
I believe it's R4.
How many apartments could you put on, Dan?
I could put eight.
Well, I can tell you this now, she'd be willing to sign it over to anybody that wanted.
And my next question is, is this a person that could bear the cost and the responsibility to do this? That's part of the concern. Your key, your key point was, she was willing to give it to somebody.
Yes.
In other words, not have, bear the responsibility of the cost. Are we not gonna go back and charge them for doing this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's just through our legal process, we can, we can go back and recover our funds. What she's trying to do is be able to get out the money and give it to somebody that's willing to go clean it up and just give the property to whoever. I know she'd be willing to give it to the city, if the city could figure out where they could benefit from the property or somebody else could talk to her. She's more than willing just to sign it over so she doesn't have the responsibility at the expense of cleaning the property and everything herself.
She wasn't. I'd have to be the one to decide it though, Jim, in order to get it all along there. That's, that's a shame that you have not got anyone that would step forward, that would be interested in this and go through perhaps the Board of Adjustment Appeals for some minor variations and build at least a small house on there for someone.
We explained it to them. It was just that they have a standard home or a plan that they like to build to just for assembly, you know, for production sake and use the same plan. And this one wouldn't really fit very well. If they put it on there, there wouldn't be any room for any parking, there would be no rear yard to speak of. It would, it would, they felt it would require too many variances and it wouldn't really be inappropriate for a house because they try to have, they try to provide homes for families and there wouldn't be any yard space for any children. They felt like it just wouldn't be appropriate in this case.
Yeah, they could pretend it was in South Louisiana, built upon stilts, should not tell the children anything other than the allegations going to get you, get out there. There's all kinds of things that you could do in regard to this. I just hate for this person, it's obvious that she doesn't want to be burdened with the cost.
No, sir, she does. She's a retired school teacher from Columbus area. She's originally from here, but I'm like you, I think the expense wise is what she's worried about. She has no problem, like I said, donating the property to someone that would see fit to improve it in the fails.
Too bad. Do we have a motion on this? Same motion?
You can't get. Don't move, move on.
Do we have a second? Same motion we've been having. Motion with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Mayor, one more thing. Lynn brought to my attention, they had darkened on the, the city mount. We had just had the wrong property darkened. It's actually been highlighted, just in case we need it for our record ourselves on the Long Street, on Mrs. Brown's property. She's moved the right part, we just darkened it on our paperwork.
But the pictures reflect the correct crop.
Right, correct. The partial reflects the right, just the darkening on our city mount.
And the parcel number.
And the parcel number reflects the same, the correct property.
Race to the next item?
Next item brought forth is going to be property for Mr. Richard Hewlett on Martin Luther King on 82 West, oh, 182 West.
What has he done now?
Can you talk about the drag line it's setting up for?
This is going to be his woodworking shop.
Has she cleaned it up or anything yet?
Yes, sir, he's actually working on it.
Mr. Hewlett.
Oh, your hair was obviously there.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, look at him, he's right there front.
Mr. Hewlett, this is a hearing on your property. You know, come up here and you're entitled to be heard and ask questions and whatever you want to do.
You can pull your chair up either. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the fact that it does, it has been in bad repair and assure the board that I am will clean the place up. Although I'm, I'm, I am M1 and, you know, a lot of those things, of course, don't apply to, I mean, trash out by the road, that sort of thing. But, but some of the equipment and things that, that would be on that hill, it's hard for me to do anything with. But Mr. Law has been real easy to work with and fair and, and I'm going to work with him on an ongoing basis to make sure that we do whatever, you know, the city wants to do to try to make it right someday. I hate that it's like that. I wish I was an industrial park, but I'm not. But I will clean it up, so. And I appreciate him being understanding about that. We, we made a big dent in it and will continue until it's finished. And I'll be glad to report back at some further date when we're absolutely, when he's got everything, when he can tell you that I'm completely through. I hope we can get to that point. That, that completely through scares me just a little bit because of the nature of the business, but I, again, I think we can get there.
Has he made significant progress to this point?
Yes, sir, he's working. I asked him to start from our main stretch, work his way back on his property because our first site is what's, when we first drive through. My recommendations on him is just give him 30 more days to complete because he's got a pretty good project ahead of him. Let's get, and 30 more days, I'll come back with an update since he's actually making a, he's making a good effort towards the property. And then after another 30 days, I'll come back and make a recommendation from there and surely in 30 days, I think, we're sure to have a pretty good progress report for us.
And also, we'll be a little clearer, but I may end up having to do some fencing and things to screen because it depends on how, a lot of things back there that you still won't, won't see from that road. So we're probably going to end up having to do some fencing and screening to eventually get it where we want it to.
Do we even necessarily need a motion, Mr. Favor? We're just going to report back in 30 days on progress or can we just let it go?
You can just, you can just make a motion for, set it for review in 30 days.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set it for review in 30 days. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Richard, the memo notes that we started talking about this in May. We did, now September, yeah.
Officer, City Clerk.
Ben Jeff, I'm sure everyone on this board wants to thank you all. This is outstanding and I hope everybody knows we are serious about this and the word from you guys is clean up.
We hope so.
Well, continue.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, will you allow me to ask you a question on this, Markey? I meant to ask you, just look, my man. Mr. Mayor, when are we going to consider the ordinance again for the sanitation ordinance? I noticed all the corrals around town and, you know, and this looks really unsightly.
Are you committed?
Yes, sir. And then secondly, and secondly, Mr. Mayor, I see where citizens in this town put garbage out way before 10 o'clock, the day before the pickup.
We got people put garbage out last Friday, still hadn't been picked up, I don't think.
Yes, sir. Well, that's, that needs, that's needs serious attention.
We had a holiday, holidays throw people off. I saw that people that normally get a pickup on Monday, put probably garbage out on Saturday and it didn't get picked up. So they picked this up today.
Unless they.
We have to answer those things or you?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's scheduled for the next board meeting. Alden Cox and I talked about it after the budget committee today.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, last thing, when is University Drive, you know, where they put those water lines in, when that should be done?
I think in the paper today, it indicated, Doug, where are you? How many, how many days do you think it'll take you to finish up on University Drive so we go ahead and get our paving in? Mr. Vice Mayor's asking questions. And the paving probably won't be finished up until the next, the following week.
Well, that'll be good. At least we have it done for our next home football game. It just looks very unsightly with all the dust flying everywhere.
To his credit, that when we, I was concerned this past Thursday night that we had the ballgame, that we were going to have all that construction activity going up and down the street. They did put it down and they did put the white cross lines on top of it. You got somewhat resumable so the buses and everything could pass there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I move approval of the claims docket through August 30, 2007.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, approve the claims docket. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Public Services, Doug, I guess that's you. I think the first thing is a bid for the road bores of Highway 12.
Yes, sir.
Richard, asset to be taken off consent. Do we have a motion that we approve that?
Move approval of the acceptance of the best bid for the five road bores for Highway 12 Extended Fire Main Construction Project from Gilco Contract Incorporated for the bid amount of $112,252.80 American cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We go to your second request here.
Yes, sir. Back in July, Wade Bishop, who was our superintendent of, out of the landfill, retired. And as we always try to do in public services, whenever we have a situation like this, before we just automatically go and refill a position that's prior salary, we try to look and see if we can restructure somehow and try to minimize our salary costs and, and basically just, just try to save money if we possibly can. Mr. Bishop was classified as a superintendent, but yet he was only supervising one full-time employee and one part-time employee. Typically, a superintendent in public services or in the street department will supervise 15 to 20 employees. So we really didn't see the need to refill that position with a, someone classified as a superintendent. The landscape division only has six budgeted positions in it with someone over classified again as a superintendent. Small department really could use some more responsibility to earn the superintendent's salary. So what we're proposing tonight is that we merge the two divisions, landscape and landfill. This, and allocate Glenn's salary in the 2008 budget as 50% to each area. By doing so, we'll save the general fund about $26,000 in salaries and benefits next year. Of course, you know, when you do something like that, you want to look at the other side too. We, we don't want to significantly increase the cost of running the landfill either when we, when we do these things. But we're also proposing that a gentleman out there who is acting as the acting superintendent be reclassified as a foreman to supervise the activities of landfill, that'd be supervised by an equipment operator and a part-time person. The closest salary that matches his job description as, you know, foreman is a new construction rehab foreman. That position operates heavy equipment, just like this guy will at the landfill. So that's a pay grade nine, step one. And then I'm also proposing that Glenn be given a modest 5% increase in salary for taking on the additional responsibility of the landfill. So after all this is said and done, as we stated earlier, the savings to the general funds are roughly $26,000 in salaries and benefit. But on the other hand, it doesn't significantly increase the price of running landfill, whereas restructuring in this way adds about roughly $3,000, just $3,000 in the cost of running the landfill and salary and benefit. So it's just about a break even on that side too. So with that being said, just to summarize my requests, I'm requesting the merging of the landfill and the, and the landscape divisions. Glenn Beverly being responsible for both positions with a 5% increase in salary. And Walter Attaberry, the acting landfill superintendent, be reclassified as a foreman at grade nine, step one, which is currently $25,218.03, with both of these pay adjustments becoming effective at the start of the next payroll period.
Start of the next payroll period, which is when?
When is it, Markey? When do we get paid? Friday?
So it'll be next Friday, not this coming Friday, but Friday night.
Any problem with an October 1 start? Any problem with an October 1 start? Or in the alternative, consideration of this removes this from any consideration of budget, additional raise, anything at, when the budget is formulated?
I'm not following while we have to wait till October 1st, Mr. McLaurin.
He says, and are removing this out of the budget request?
If we tend to this now, then there's, there's no further action to be taken with regard to.
Oh, okay. Well, I understand. Yes, that's fine.
You know, not then some sort of percentage raise on top of raise or anything.
Well, okay, now I'm following. So what we're saying, this 5% would also include the 5% he would have gotten on October 1st or?
You know, we're, we're trying to come up with an effective date to implement the organizational change you have requested and recommended.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, I guess, put it this way, if we made it October 1st, I would not like to make Glenn ineligible for any, you know, other cost of living adjustments that were made for other employees and for the city. Am I explaining myself correctly?
You're explaining yourself, but that seems to deviate from what you had originally proposed a little bit.
Well, whatever, whatever works. Certainly for, just speaking for myself, I'm, I see the opportunity we have here to make the organizational change. I know there's some of these issues from a salary standpoint and we may be better off approving, getting some consensus around the board on the organizational changes and understanding how that impacts the budget, but then having the actual salary decisions made when we make our budget decisions on the 18th of September. I understand, okay. Yes, yes, Mr. McLaurin.
So that we hear a motion?
I would move then that the proposed organizational change, merging the landscape and landfill divisions, as outlined in the memo we have, and you will furnish a copy, electronic copy of the memo to Tammy.
Yes, sir.
To use for the minutes, be approved. Of course, see, I was proposed to go on and look at the whole proposal, but now we're backtracking around about all sorts of things connected to salary, which comes as a surprise.
Yes, sir. I don't, whatever works.
Well, what works best is what we were trying to come with, your proposal.
Well, I think if, if I look back to what I presented back then, I think it, it was that this, of course, at the time, we didn't really know what the citywide COLA was going to be.
Still don't know.
Yeah, 3%, 5%, whatever. Yeah, whatever. That I, if we do this now, I just want to make sure that Glenn isn't somehow, you know.
That's that in the rank?
Yes, sir. If, if that makes sense, I'm.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay.
But what they're saying also is that they're approving the organizational change.
Okay.
And that the budget has not been hashed out.
Okay.
That at the time that the budget is hashed out, that the raises and so forth be delegated at that time.
Sure.
The salary portions will be set then.
Yes, sir.
And we can have further discussion on what applies to what.
Yes, sir. I understand. Yeah, that will, no, it'll be fine. Thank you.
So the motion is to approve the organizational change, the merger with the, and the accompanying assignments and changes and responsibilities and so forth, the whole thing, except the salary portions will wait adoption of the final city vote.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Got one other item here, I believe.
Okay. The last item that was taken off the consent agenda, as y'all may recall, I had a, had hired an administrative assistant back in latter part of last year. She, she worked for me for about eight months, spent a lot of time training and developing and depending on this person and then they, they left me and she left me latter part of July for a position making more money. I don't feel it's appropriate to re-advertise, to fill this position, because I don't want to go through that same cycle again, so we can maybe look at salaries and equity and that kind of thing. But what I would like to do is to, instead of refilling this position right now, is to combine two part-time positions that we already have vacant in the, in the water and sewer division. sewer division, combine those two salaries together and then add $2,600, $2,936.16 to that and be able to, to fill that position with a, a person that can come in with information technology skills, that knows ArcView, that knows Microsoft Access, just a lot of the skills we need to start moving our technology initiative forward. Talked to somebody out in the community who has these skills and they said that they would be willing to come work for that at $17.50 an hour. So with that said, I would like to request the approval of combining these positions and then adding that difference to it and filling that position with a part-time person at $17.50 an hour.
I would move then that the two vacant part-time positions in the water sewer department, that of administrative assistant and the...
No.
GIS.
Helper and, and computer helper.
And computer helper.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Those two vacant positions.
Yes, sir.
GIS helper, computer helper, be combined into a new temporary position. That we're calling information technology specialist. It will be part-time.
Yes, sir.
And that funds in the amount of approximately $3,000 be added to the existing budget for the two temporary positions to fund this part-time information technology specialist position.
Second, all those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Mr. Dever. Brings us now to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, just one last question. Mr. Mayor, when is the board going to take official action of setting and determining and setting the salaries for the employees for the next fiscal? I know that the budget adoption is going to be at the next meeting on the 18th, but why are we waiting to, why are we waiting to the last minute to do that?
Well, we've been, we've worked hard today and got good results.
I understand, I understand what I'm talking about, official board action. When is that going to be taken? Why are we waiting to the last minute?
We'll be taking on the 18th. Is that not right, Matt?
I mean, that's the way, right now, we don't have consensus yet around the board on how we want to address those executive issues.
I feel like we're going to probably have to have another meeting, a budget work session.
Or a specially called.
Or a specially called.
All we can recess to a time certain tonight, you know, if I had to do a special call. I mean, if the board knows when it wants to meet again, we just recess to a time certain.
We can do that. We'd have everyone give presents over.
If we know.
Good question, good point.
Yes, sir. I just curious why we're waiting till 18th to determine salaries. I think we want...
That brings us down to go into a closed session in order to go to discussion for executive session.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, before, before we consider that, I would move approval of the items transferred to the consent agenda as previously enumerated.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Now, if we'll take consideration to go into closed session to discuss executive session, which has pending legislation. I hear a motion that we go to litigation. Do we have a second? Second.